Good evening, I'd like to call the November eighteenth regular meeting to order for the Global Local Board of Education. Ms. Jenkins, would you please call the board?
Mr. Neuma?
Here.
Mr. Bush?
Here.
Ms. Kalamazoo is absent, President McCallum is absent, Vice President Darrow.
Here. Please stand and be here.
Pardons me to retire, but the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the routine justice of our.
For the four minutes, the minutes from the October seventh and twenty-first board meetings were distributed prior to the meeting. If there are no other, no changes, may I have a motion in the second to approve the minutes?
No motion.
Second. Ms. Jenkins, would you please call the board?
Mr. Neuma?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes. Mr. Sawyers, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No, thank you.
You have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. So, Mr. Sawyers.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Neuma?
Yes.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes. It's now time for communications. Mr. Sawyers?
Thank you, Vice President Darrow. For members of our community, just wanted to want to remind you on behalf of our communications team, the school district sent its emergency test message for calamity and/or other public notification related to school closure. We sent it through text, email, and any other corresponding message from the possibility that we had the school district assigned to our students and families. So if a family in New Albany did not receive the test message, and you wish to receive notifications related to school delay or closure, please contact the school district main office, and we will be happy to help you get registered to receive those communications, either through text message or email of your choosing, or both. You can have as many family members in your current household, but you need to see as children to be notified as you so choose. But we want to make sure all families get the notification, and climate weather will eventually happen. We live in central Ohio, and despite everyone's greatest efforts, there are times they two-hour delay, my preference over school closure is required. And I know the students love to hear that that is my preference versus closure. But we will do whatever is necessary to keep the kids safe, and sometimes that requires closing the school district. So next, we would like to turn our attention to the Albany High School Outstanding Girls' Golf Team, and invite Pat Sanich and our coaches to the podium to talk about our outstanding team, and everything they've accomplished during the 2019 season.
Coaches?
Yeah.
Members of the board, Vice President Darrow, Superintendent Sawyers, District Administration, it's my honor to represent the athletic department tonight. This is one of the kind of flashback moment from the coaching days, and one that I always kind of really strived for, to be a little bit jealous, to be honest with you, but so grateful and impressed to be here, and just honored to be able to introduce and recognize their 2019 girls golf team, and their coach, Coach Ritter. He's got some amazing statistics to show you, but ladies, congratulations, both of them off the course, and Coach Ritter, Dr. Ritter.
Thank you very much. Thanks for having us here tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to be before you, and the opportunity for the recognition that these girls so greatly deserve. So yeah, I would like to just share a little bit of a synopsis with you of our season, and give you kind of a taste of what went into this championship season. First of all, the team had a conference record, OCC record of 20-0, and with an overall record of 229-0. So that's the number of teams we would have faced throughout the various invitationals that we played. Incidentally, I got thinking about the time we spent together in the team van, went back and looked at that. We spent, we were getting for 2,275 miles. That adds up to about 38 hours together in the van. And some of the most memorable time of the whole season. Team average this year was 296.78, that is 74.19 per counting player. Those of you familiar with golf, that means on average, our counting score was about two strokes over par. Average margin of victory this year was 23.27, so we were winning by 5.8 strokes per counting score over our teammates, or teams we were playing. Four of our tournaments, we had underpar team scores, and another one we shot an even-par score. Over the course of the season, we had 31 individual team member rounds of par or better, including a team record this fall by Madison Spies of 65, that's seven under, at Yankee Trace on August nineteenth. On our team, we had individual tournament medalists 20 of the 22 tournaments that we played. The season culminated in unprecedented postseason performance, in which the team won the sectional district and state tournament by a combined margin of 90 strokes. We set a sectional tournament record, shooting two-under-par score of 286, which was a 38-stroke victory, led by sectional champion Kari Hollenball, with a round of 69, which was three-under. Won the district tournament by nine strokes, behind district champion Anna Ritter with a 71, one-under. And then at the state tournament, got off to a pretty nice start, seven-over on the first nine to grab an early lead, and then really the girls kind of hit the accelerator from there on the back nine. On a stretch from number 11 to 15, there were seven birdies on those five holes combined on the team. Team played the final 27 holes of the tournament in four-over par. In the process, the Eagles set consecutive 18-hole scoring records, to win by a state record 43 strokes, and to break our own state tournament total score record from 2008 by 21 strokes. Ending with a team total of 571. Team members Madison Spies, Kari Hollenball, and Anna Ritter all claiming first-team All-State honors, and Anna Ritter won the individual state championship with a final round three-under-par 67, and a two-day total of 138, which is two-under-par. Over the last two seasons now, the team has set the OCC sectional district and state tournament record, and has an overall record in that time of 416-0. So, girls, if you can come up when your name is called. First, we have Anna Kosha. And Anna Ritter.
Four members, we're going to invite you to the front, take a photo with the state championship girls golf team. While four members are moving out to the front, we also want to thank the parents and your families. We know this is a team effort, and we greatly appreciate everything you do to support the girls on a daily basis to help them use the stuff that you have to throw at them as much as you're. If you'd like to, while we take pictures as well, if you would like to. Patrick, we need you to, you want people to move in, turn sideways?
Yeah, just a little bit, turn sideways. I'll do it. Hey, here we go. Here.
Awesome.
Thank you so much.
What are you going to do next year?
Girls and families, we're giving this opportunity to exit stage right, if you don't want to exit, the rest of the board meeting. Thank you, coaches.
The bench are such underachievers, don't ever play any of your games.
I was at a holiday party a few years ago, predicted all of us, almost 15.
Majority of the members, majority of the classmen, so there's actually a great opportunity.
Update from the Global Education Association, like to invite the representative.
Hello, thank you board for having me. My name's Leslie Roth, I teach second grade at a primary school. I'm excited to be here tonight and share with you some of the great things that our Global Education Association wanted to highlight. Lots of exciting things happened in November. We had five first-grade teachers, Kelsey White, Harley Tobler, Lori Hendricks, and Megan Johnson's classes work on personal narratives, and they hosted an author's night, families were able to come to school and listen as their children shared their small moment booklets, and they also took the families through the writing process, which provided an authentic audience for the kids, and the parents really enjoyed it and loved it. So that was great. Marlene Dunlop was the math intervention teacher at our primary building, attended the COTC Mathematical Conference in Sandusky, Ohio, a two-day conference, where she went to 10 different sessions each hour to learn about new mathematics strategies for students, and her and Teresa Smith are going to collaborate together and work on some sharing of ideas with all staff that's interested. And she was also to learn from one of her favorite math experts, Dr. Nikki Newman. Kimberly Minisberry, the primary school counselor, went to the All-Ohio Counselors Conference, where she went to hear a keynote speaker, and learn more about trauma-informed care, evidence-based practices for supporting students with anxiety mindfulness, using data to validate school counseling, and best practices for suicide assessment, safety planning. She appreciates opportunities like this, so she can continue to gain insight for best practices with social emotional growth of all children. On November first, as of November first, the high school counselors processed 1,972 college applications for students. This is a November first record. This was an increase of 345 applications from last year. The staff themselves, the high school staff, wrote over 441 letters or recommendations for students, and the high school counselors, Stephanie Dragan, Jill Cuthbert, Audrey Wheeler, and Julie Corning, wanted to extend it. A thank you to all high school teachers who wrote all the recommendation letters, and a special thank you to Kim Kurtland, their college center assistant. They're very proud of it. Christina Ellis, sixth-grade class, went over to the ELC in November, and they shared their personal narratives with the kindergarten students and two teachers' classrooms. The kindergartners were asking questions of their guests, and they also recorded answers on their iPads. So the sixth graders were the kindergartners' buddies, the sixth graders listened, took notes, and offered advice to the kindergartners, and they hope to keep this collaboration going, as they were able to also give a purposeful audience, the kindergartners, about their writing. This also helped to build the sense of New Albany pride as these kids get older. Several certified staff from across this community went to the Ohio Association for Gifted Children's Ball Conference, two days in October. This provided professional development for gifted identification, acceleration, differentiated learning, and social emotional characteristics of all gifted children. Staff came away with lots of new ideas, what to share with colleagues, and how to implement new ideas with new student populations. And in addition, they were able to hear the keynote speaker, Del Segal, who focused on key instructions with classroom management strategies to motivate gifted students who are underachieving. So lots of great things to share, and I just had to put a plug in, the primary intermediate schools also did a great job of their Veterans Day celebration and assembly. We had lots of great comments from veterans, active, and retired military, how much they appreciated the kids' involvement and honoring them. So thank you for letting me share tonight.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion items? Are there any board liaison reports? Moving on to graduation requirements, Mr. Sawyers.
Lieutenant Vice Dr. Hamilton is at the podium. Mr. Kramer unfortunately is ill this evening, so he will not be joining. Dr. Hamilton to discuss and present graduation requirements now effective for the state of Ohio. I'd ask Dr. Hamilton to share this with the Board of Education and the public this evening, where the process of updating all the information across the school district website, as well as our communications in preparation for student registration. That will begin actually in January, but you'll hear more about that next month. So this is the beginning of the stage to lay the foundation for 2020, 2021, and beyond. So Dr. Hamilton's going to walk through the changes specifically for graduation requirements, and the work is still to continue within the school district based upon statutory changes in the requirements and local control for decisions that we will have to make as Board of Education. Dr. Hamilton?
Thank you Superintendent Sawyers, Vice President Darrow, and other board members. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. I know it would have been much more riveting if Ken Kramer would have been here, but he is unable to be here, so I'm the one. So anyway, let's move forward here. So just an overview of our presentation, of our presentation. We're going to do a quick glance at the current landscape, review of graduation pathways by class, highlights of major changes, and action steps moving forward. So first of all, in terms of the current landscape, in a minute I will show you a chart, and I think you have a handout with the chart, but as a quick overview, the, there are three sets of graduation pathways for our current students, and the class of 2020 has multiple graduation pathways. The classes of 21 and 22 have the option to meet the original three graduation pathways, which we'll talk about in a minute, or the new requirements. Classes of 2023 and beyond must meet the new graduation requirements outlined in state law. And so just to show you the, here's a chart, we can ignore the two columns on the left-hand side, because those are not relevant any longer, but on the right-hand side, you'll see the class of 2020. They have several options, as I said, multiple options, three pathways they can do. There are modified additional graduation options, which we'll talk about, or what are called permanent requirements, but as we all know, nothing is permanent when it comes to this kind of thing, so we're just calling them the new requirements, we're not calling them permanent. So just in case, just so you realize that. Then the classes of 21 and 22, there are the three pathways, or the permanent requirements. These three pathways have been in existence for a number of years now, so those are still in existence for 21 and 22, or they could go with the new requirements. Then the classes of 2023 and beyond, to infinity and beyond, are going to have to meet the new, what are called permanent, what goes around as requirements. So that gives you kind of an overview of what we just talked about. Okay, go on to the next one. So here are the three pathways, which most people will be very familiar with. You have the Ohio State Test, called end-of-course exams. You need to earn 18 credits on seven end-of-course exams. And so they need to have, those end-of-course exams are Algebra I, Geometry, ELA I and II at this, for this class, Biology, American History, and American Government. And you need a minimum of four points in math, four points in English, six points in cross science and social studies, and then four additional points in other areas. So that's the first pathway, earning 18 credits on seven end-of-course exams. There are also industry-recognized credentials and scores on a workforce readiness test, totaling 12 points in a credentialing program, and 14 or higher on the ACT Work Keys, which is given one-time free. And so again, if we want to look at this industry-recognized credential, we can do that real quick, and you can see there are a number of different credentials and career paths that they can, that they can access. So those are, those are some of the pathways for this credential, industry-recognized credential. Then the third way, the third pathway, is college and career readiness assessment. So you have to earn a remediation-free score on the ACT or SAT, and we are giving the SAT this year, as you know, we've switched to the SAT from the ACT, and all juniors will take that, and it's paid for by the state. So we will be doing that. And the required scores for the ACT that we used to do, the ELA remediation-free score was 18 in English Language Arts, the math was 22 or higher, and in for the SAT that is upcoming, the English portion will be require a 480 or higher, and the math will require a 530, 530 points or higher. So those are the remediation-free. So those are currently the three pathways that have been in existence for a number of years, since 2017, or 2018, 19, and beyond. So those are the three pathways. Then, these are the additional graduation pathways. Every year, the, each class has had additional graduation options, because we found out that not every student was able to meet one of those three pathways that I just talked about, so we needed additional alternative graduation options. So every year, the legislature has approved these additional options. This year, several years have been a little different. So this year is the last year for these additional options, and they're called modified additional options, because they aren't the same as the past years. So these are the things that need to happen. So this is the additional or alternative option one. Take and pass courses that meet the curriculum requirements, and take all required end-of-course exams, and retake all English or math end-of-course exams with a score of one or two at least once, and meet at least two of the following eight requirements. This gets complicated, so I apologize that it gets kind of complicated as we go along here. But basically, if they, once, if they don't pass, once they take and pass the courses that meet the curriculum requirements, and take all required end-of-course exams, they're done. And then they can retake all English or math OCCs with a score of one or two at least once, and meet at least two of the following eight requirements. So they can earn a GPA of 2.5 in 11th and 12th grade. There's a capstone project, which is like our senior seminar for 12th grade, but it's this year, it is state-defined, so we have to follow the state requirements for the capstone project, which we've already had our senior seminar teachers look at that and review it, and make any changes that we need to make, so that we're in compliance. There's also 120 hours of work or community service, which must be completed in the 12th grade as well, that's a little different this year. They can earn three or more CCP credits, college credit plus, sorry, college credit plus credits. Earn credit for AP or IB course in score of three or higher on the AP, and a four or higher on the IB exams. They have the ACT Work Keys exam, which they need to score a three on each of three tests. They could also earn an industry-recognized credential equal to at least three points, and then earn an Ohio Means Job Readiness Seal. And so those are the eight, they need to do two of those eight things, plus take all the required end-of-course exams, and do two of those. Okay? So that's, that's that. Then there's an additional option, as an alternative, that they could, that they could meet, and they still have to, they still have to take and pass courses that meet the curriculum requirements, and take all required end-of-course exams, like they did in option one, and they need to finish a career technical program, including four courses in one career pathway, and at least one of the following options, total score proficient or better on all career technical exams or test modules, industry-recognized credential equal to 12 points, I showed you that chart, 250 hours of workplace experience with positive evaluations. So those are all of the additional or alternative pathways, and believe it or not, we have 27 seniors who are currently exploring, pursuing an alternative pathway in order to graduate for this year. So we have at least 27. We have some others that were, that were kind of on the bubble, but can do one or two things and be okay. But we have 27 who are absolutely looking at one of these alternative pathways for 2020 graduation. So this does impact some of our students. Okay, moving on to the classes of 2021 and 22, they need to, these students in these classes need to complete courses and NAPL's graduation requirements, and they also need to, they can pass the three pathways in Ohio law, which again are the Ohio's State Test, 18 credits on seven end-of-course exams, industry-recognized credential, sorry, credential, and score on workforce readiness test, totaling 12 points, and 14 or higher on ACT Work Keys, and the college and career readiness assessment, the remediation-free score on ACT or SAT, again, one-time for juniors paid for by the state. So they can do that, that's one thing they can do. Or they can meet the new graduation requirements by demonstrating competency, and there are three options, again, a little complicated, to demonstrate competency, and there are two career focus activities they would need for option one, work-based learning, apprenticeships, work keys, industry-recognized credential, et cetera. Option two is to enlist in the military, they can have a, be in a junior ROTC program, or have a signed contract for enlistment into the armed forces. Option three is to complete college coursework, they can earn three college credit plus credits in English and/or math college-level courses. The other thing they need to do is demonstrate readiness, and so they can earn two of 12 diploma seals, which is something that's new. Nine are state-defined, and three are locally defined, but the students must achieve, at least, at least one must be state-defined. We're going to talk about these pathways when we go into the next class of 2023 and beyond. So this again is kind of following that chart that we, that we looked at at the beginning. So basically, the three key components of the new requirements are these. Course completion, Ohio and NAPL's requirements of 21 credits, including economics and financial literacy, two semesters of fine arts, senior seminar, and 25 community service hours. Those are our requirements for graduation. And they, all students will also need to demonstrate competency, foundational areas of ELA and math, or alternatives such as college credit plus, career-focused activities, or military enlistment, and then they will also need to demonstrate readiness. Those are where the diploma seals come in, have to meet two of the 12, and again, one must be state-defined. So let's see how that impacts the class of 2023 and beyond. So demonstrating competency, that's the first thing they need to do. So the students will need to earn a three or higher on Algebra I and the ELA II end-of-course exams, and take Biology, American History, and American Government. Now you notice we've gone from seven to five exams here, end-of-course exams. ELA I will be eliminated for this class, and possibly Geometry, there's a proposal by the state to eliminate Geometry, that has not happened yet, so we're not positive about that. But then, so they do that. Then students who take the required math and ELA tests more than once without passing, so they take it, they don't pass, if they pass it, they're done. If they don't, then they can take it, and again, one more time, and then they also receive remedial supports, they receive assistance, and they can show competency through one of the following three options. They can earn college credit plus credit for one math or one English course, they can enlist in the military through junior ROTC or a signed contract, and they can show career readiness and technical skill through two career-focused activity options. There's a foundational option, which is that pre-apprenticeship apprenticeship programs, proficient scores on web exit, web exams, which are, have to do with the industry credentialing, and a 12-point industry credential, these are exams they take for those industry credentials. And there's also the supporting activity, career-focused activity, which is work-based learning, 250 hours, required score on work keys, which is 14 points currently, and the Ohio Means Jobs Readiness Seal, which we'll talk about in a minute as well. So those are the competencies. Then, they will also, sorry, I didn't switch, sorry. And then demonstrate readiness, so they have to earn two of 12 diploma seals. Nine seals are state-defined, and three seals are locally defined, and they must achieve, one of the two must be state-defined. So here are the nine state-defined seals, Ohio Means Jobs Readiness, Industry Recognized Credential Seal, College Ready Seal, which is basically their remediation-free SAT and ACT, Military Enlistment Citizenship Seal. In this case, they would, the students would need to pass the American History and American Government test with a three or higher. They could also... They could also get proficient score on AP or IB exams for a final course grade that is equivalent to B or higher in a CCP course. So and the science seal is very similar, except they'd have to pass, get a three or better in biology or do those other things. Then the honors diploma seal, here's a link up so you can see what the honors diplomas are. Okay, there's the honors diplomas seals, there are six of them, six honors diplomas, academic, international, bachelor, laureate, career tech, STEM, arts and social science and civic engagement. So those are all of the honors diplomas that a student could, they could earn one of those and the requirements. Then we also have the seal of biliteracy, we have the technology seal, and then our locally defined seals will be community service, fine and performing arts, student engagement. And so those are the three seals that we will need to come together and develop guidelines for. And then the Board of Education will need to approve those those guidelines for those three, for those three locally defined seals. Then major, these are sometimes it's kind of a summary of the major changes that we've just kind of gone through. First of all, the elimination of ELA and and the proposal for geometry end of course exams, elimination of the three graduation paths for twenty twenty-three, including eight to the eighteen total points, revised alternative pathway for the class of twenty twenty, talked briefly about that with the twelfth grade capstone and the community service. And then they also eliminated the attendance. There was an attendance alternative pathway for the class of nineteen that is no longer available for the twenty twenty. Also, the all of the, oh, the things are eleventh and twelfth, like things, the courses have to be achieved in the eleventh and twelfth grades. So those are, that's another thing. And the community service has to total one hundred and twenty hours. Then there is also the addition of alternative ways to show competency, the two career focused activities we talked about in the other slide, military enlistment, math and English CCP, college credit plus course credit. Now, some action steps that we're currently working on, we're developing graduation plans for current freshmen so that they have a chance to plan and know what they're going to do, because this is the class that's going to be impacted, that's the class of twenty twenty-three, our freshman. So for that class, they no longer have any pathways, they're just, they have, they have to meet the new graduation requirements of competency and readiness. We've also initiated a graduation seal committee at the high school to recommend guidelines for the three local diploma seals that we will bring forward. And as you know, the class of, as I mentioned, the class of twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and really the class of twenty twenty that wanted to could could meet the new requirements. It's a little late for twenty twenty, but twenty-one and twenty-two could could also do that. And then we're in the process of educating students, staff and parents regarding the new graduation requirements for each of the graduating classes. So we've already sent something out to parents, I believe. We've also sent some, given some information to the teachers, to staff, and in the process of talking to students, and we'll do more of that as we as we go along. Class of twenty twenty isn't as impacted as really this, the current freshman in the class of twenty twenty-three is the class that's really impacted. So that's kind of a quick overview with getting in the weeds a little bit, but because it's complicated, but hopefully it makes sense. So what, do you have any questions?
So thank you, Dr. Hamilton. For board members, I just want to add, and reiterate one point that Shirley kept making throughout the presentation, that although they're labeled as permanent requirements, these changed at least fifteen times going through the legislative process over the course of the last eighteen months. And although this is currently what's adopted through legislation and the State Board of Education regulations, and they're listed as permanent, we're calling them new because the reality is they can still change just by having legislation happen. So we want kids to understand, and it's one thing that we actually argued for and supported in the legislative change, that the current requirements that are technically called new apply to the freshman class coming into New Albany High School, and they're currently finishing their first semester very soon. Their original legislation actually applied them to the current sophomore class, and we, as educators, did our best to get that changed so that students would not have rules changed upon them after they've already entered high school and have adopted coursework or taken coursework that could adversely impact their ability to graduate. So currently, there's twenty-seven students at New Albany High School, just in the current requirements that are have been labeled at risk, that we've created individual plans for to try to make sure that we get them across the finish line called graduation to receive their diploma. Where Shirley went in implementing graduation plans for freshmen is because this is that complicated. So the registration guide that will be published really next month into January, right after winter break, will include a delineation of the specific graduation requirements for the class because it is very complicated to try to follow what specifically applies to which class so that parents and students have a clear understanding of these are the requirements you're held responsible to and have to be able to achieve in order to earn the graduation diploma specifically from New Albany High School. Shirley, another question I have for you, it just wasn't in the presentation, but I think it's for the board, it's important for them to know. Historically, the graduation requirements that the Board of Education's adopted for New Albany have exceeded state minimum standards. So in the proposed new changes that the state has adopted, do we still exceed the minimum state requirement?
Yes, the the course requirements have not changed. They're still at twenty for the state, and we're at twenty-one, plus our community cert twenty-five hours of community service.
And senior.
Yeah, so I also provided this handout for you. This is another, I think, good summary of the, and it's pretty easy to follow, just the basic information, a high level overview, and it talks in there, shows you in there the twenty requirements, twenty credits, and we have, we require twenty-one and plus our community service. So so yes, we do still exceed that.
Given that the Ohio General Assembly and the State Board of Education have chosen to make this such a simple process, is it safe to assume that the high school graduation guide will specifically outline each of these options for each class so that anyone in any class can go to that page and see what's what their choices are?
Yes, we we're definitely planning on doing that, absolutely, because otherwise students won't know what to do, so their parents won't know.
Right, so students and their parents, and specifically saying, it's complicated, please look at your your student's class.
Yes, absolutely, yes. And there is a similar summary for the class of twenty twenty-one and twenty-two. I didn't give you that because I didn't want to go too far into the weeds, but if anybody would like that, I can share that with you as well, for the class of twenty twenty-one and twenty-two. And then there's a similar chart, just real high level, basic, basic information, and then twenty twenty-three and beyond. But that's good because people don't always want to go into the weeds, to see what's next.
Paul or Mike, any additional questions? We know this is very complicated. We were required by state regulations to do a public presentation. This will be incorporated into the student registration nights for New Albany High School, so the incoming freshman classes, current eighth graders will have their own presentation specifically for eighth grade parents, and they will only see the information that's applicable for them will be class of two thousand and point four, so twenty-three and beyond. They won't see the other information because they're not eligible for it. So the registration evenings that will be convened will be targeted for specific grade levels because of the complexity of trying to go through every single class with every type of parent. It's easier to do it by grade level and say, these will be the only options that apply to you in your grade level.
I look forward to the eighth grade presentation. It was very clear, it's a lot of doors.
It's a lot, thank you. The outstanding work for us are the three local seals. Students have to earn two seals to graduate, only one of the two can be a local seal. So as Dr. Hamilton indicated, we started that committee work specifically to define what those three seal requirements will be. Those will come forward for Board of Education input after the administration works with our teachers, first students' statutory requirement at the high school to involve them in the process, and then seals, recommendations will come forward. But that work has to continue because technically it is an option for the current juniors as a pathway that's alternate for them to still graduate from high school. So we have the responsibility to find three local level seals to give them that option if they would need it when they become seniors.
This is a good question, yeah. I mean, this is ridiculous and confusing, honestly. Oh my gosh.
This is eighteen months in the making, you should have seen the first version.
I'm just wondering, like, what are we doing over the four years of the journey through high school, just make sure the kids are tracking to meet these requirements? Because the kids aren't thinking about, they're just thinking about studying and doing good in the classroom, right? So just want to make sure that we're supporting them.
Yes, and my my goal, and I hope, I'm sure Ken would say the same thing, we want to meet with all, like, all freshmen this year because they're the first class that has to meet the twenty twenty-three and beyond requirements. So we want to meet with them and have a plan for every freshman and that is understandable, and we can get parent input if, you know, if necessary as well, parents can be involved in that. And that, so do that with each class, every, I mean, like, with the juniors, make sure they understand. The juniors, it's not, I mean, they still, basically, they they still have the three pathways, and that's what most students do, that most students meet one of the three pathways, honestly. Like I said, we have twenty-seven seniors, by the time they get to be seniors, we have twenty-seven or thirty kids, you know, something like that, that that need another pathway. So most of them will need the three, you know, the three.
So Mike, there you're point, like, the school counselors, back to the journey. So the school counselors do a transcript audit and they keep track of how students are specifically achieving, which specific year, year over year.
Yes.
So that at the end of your freshman year, they have the audit that says you met this many points in this specific pathway, and this is what you still have to accomplish. These are the courses you're registered for your sophomore year, they'll do the same thing at the end of sophomore year to see how you progress, and then the junior year and the senior year. And then if you become at risk, and we kind of identify you by the time you're in your junior year, we have specific processes in place to assist you and your family to try to make sure we're doing everything we can to get you to the point where you're able to graduate through one of the pathways.
We've already identified the juniors.
Yeah, we know who the kids are, and that communication is happening with the family. So but there is a safety net, to your point, through an audit of the transcript at the semester and at the end of the year. Seniors, you're laser focused because we have to keep track of everything that's happening with you because we've got to get you to graduation, but the same thing's happening with juniors down there.
And we're monitoring the senior progress on their alternative pathways for those students.
The school counselors and the high school administrators know who those students are that are at risk. Ask the teachers in question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hamilton. I know it's complicated and it's not easy.
All right, next item has to do with the expansion of advertising rights, Mr. Sawyer.
So I just want to update the Board of Education, and I will be sending you a document. Mr. Wieldenhouse, Mrs. Jenkins and I are working with Side Effects based upon the conversations I've had in subcommittee with Mr. Bush and Mr. Himoff to try to define our continued pursuit of advertising rights to expand within the school district. Our focus had been in looking specifically at the potential of increasing advertising rights to sell the advertisement within the stadium specifically. So we've created that plan through Side Effects with some marketing information that's applicable to it. I'm going to send that to the Board of Education, I received the final draft, Ms. Sawyer and I have gone through it, although we have some notes for correction. I need to get initial reactions from the Board of Education. We are going to send out a public notice based upon the letter that I have circulated to the board that we're interested in doing this. We had mentioned it at state of schools, we've talked about it at Board of Education meetings, we're going to publicly advertise that we're going to do this, just to see if there's any other vendors that haven't been identified or come forward. We've been contacted by a few people after we had the last Board of Education conversation that have some interest in different levels of sponsorship for advertisement that we have talked about, to be a diamond sponsor as an example on the scoreboard is in the literature you're going to see versus I want to physically be involved in putting my name as an advertiser to sell advertisement rights at the stadium for ten years. And I want to advertise on your bleachers or on your seats or on the scoreboard, all that's been defined based upon the work that we did in our subcommittee. So I'll send you the draft, I need feedback from board so that we can send it back to Side Effects for correction, and then we can actually use it as a tool to try to start engaging with businesses or vendors that might be interested in increasing their advertising presence on our school campus to help us offset future capital asset expenses. So we may continue progress, but after get full board feedback, I'll send it back to Side Effects, we'll get it back, and then I'll meet with Mr. Bush and Mr. Himoff as well as Ms. Jenkins, and we'll talk about our next step. I do have a vendor that's interested in a conversation after Thanksgiving, so he saw the conversations we've had at the board meeting and is interested in having a conversation with us. So I'd like to try to finish the document. So we have it to use to actually be able to share that and sit down and talk about what those potential opportunities can be for our school district based upon our conversations publicly today. So we've made good progress. I think we're ready to start publicly talking with people that are interested in potentially advertising with us.
Great, great work for this year, that.
Yeah, so it'll be in your email, I just need feedback so that we can go through it with Side Effects one more time.
Outstanding. All right, on to the five-year forecast. Ms. Jenkins, second reading.
Thank you. I don't have a lot to say since we did the big presentation at the last board meeting, just reminding everyone that we are looking at having a positive vending cash balance in the hundred and fifty year by three point nine million dollars. However, we do need to pay attention to spending because we start to spend more of revenue next fiscal year as projected. As we work through the year, we will incorporate the reductions that we will make based on C I T hole. Those are not in the forecast yet, so I expect that to get tighter, but please remain. So unless there are any questions, I didn't have any comments or any request for changes to the forecast.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Board policy, Mr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Vice President Zaro. Members of the Board of Education, so you have first reading tonight for policies that are presented based upon statutory changes or specific language that's been recommended through legal counsel based upon the changes in state statute. Those have been incorporated into the employment policies specifically and/or policies that specifically relate to other student services across our entire school district or policies that directly pertain to students, either for mental health, suicide prevention, student abuse and neglect, or food services as examples. There is no dramatic change that I would point to in any of the policies that are presented this evening. The most interesting one that's brand new that hasn't ever been presented before is about drones, and it's actually called small unmanned aircraft systems, but it actually talks about the ability for what's required for a drone to be present on the school campus, the FAA license that's required for the drone operator, and the safety regulations specifically. So that is a new policy that's being recommended, that's become a statutory requirement, I believe, in the state of Ohio based upon how it was presented. Okay, so that's probably the most interesting one I can point to because it was new. But it was actually beneficial, and although I have to say this as an aside, we haven't adopted it yet, this is the first reading, our marching band, when we did the marching band festival, we actually had a request to have the drone flown to videotape the bands. So actually, having previewed the policy, we used that to create guidelines to give to the marching band that they actually could then use the drone, so we could actually test the guidelines out to see if they would work, and they actually did work. So even before we had a policy, I'd use the guidelines.
Times are changing. What grade we keep up? All right, we've come to our first opportunity for public participation. Are there any, any questions? All right, treasure, on the treasurer's items, may I have a motion, second to approve treasurer's items A through D. Someone, second. All right, Ms. Jenkins?
Thank you. Financial report for four months into the year, we're running on plan, we've already talked about these revenue increase, or we received about one point five million dollars in revenue, and we anticipated the bulk of that is in real estate. Part of that is timing with people paying their real estate tax, part of that is increased for tax collections. We are under expenditures by about seven hundred thousand dollars at this point in the year, so doing well. The second item is the five-year forecast, which we just talked about, the appropriation modification, that part of that is matching the five-year work, the general fund appropriations with the five-year forecast, and then you can read through the additional, we are increasing a permanent. We are increasing the permanent improvement fund, that's $2 million. I'm going to transfer $2 million if you approve that this evening, um, to put into permanent improvement to help offset playground equipment and, um, other capital needs that we may have. Um, the bulk of the rest of them are matching, um, either fundraising or additional expenses, which do have offsetting revenues, or, uh, as you can see, the 400 and 500 funds, 499, 516 through 590 are all state federal grants, and so we're just matching the allocation that we received. And then transfer fund is just transferring $2 million from general fund into P I to offset, uh, the playground that we know we're going to do in the closer to summer. And then on the internet, that's the things that we have. Any questions?
Any questions? Ms. Jenkins, would you please call the board?
Mr. Himmack?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
And Superintendent's items, we have a motion, second, to approve Superintendent's items A through C. Just one second. Mr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Vice President Darrow. Um, members of the Board of Education, for personnel this evening under letter A. Um, there's standard employee action items pursuant to the negotiated agreements with Global Education Association, or OFC Local 303, um, to recognize specific requirements. There's one on here that I actually would point out just because it's the acceptance of a retirement. Um, Darrell Seikert, a high school social studies teacher, has notified us of his intent to retire at the end of the school year. He's the first teacher retirement that has gone public, um, for the 2019-20 school year. Darrell Seikert's been a wonderful, um, social studies teacher and a home instructor, um, for students that have medical-related issues that can't come to school. Mr. Seikert's actually one of the most prominent home instructors for those students, so he's an incredible person. Um, he will be greatly missed as a full-time social studies teacher at the high school. We're doing our best to encourage him to continue his interest in home instruction, um, just because of the impact that he has with our kids. Um, but he is the first official teacher to announce his retirement at the end of the current school year. Letter B this evening for general business, um, has, um, recommendations for specific field trips, um, a security purchase to continue enhanced security, cameras at the high school, the middle school, the stadium, and, um, the introduction of what we had alluded to with Dr. Hamilton's presentation, starting of the planning for 2020, 2021. Um, you'll have a recommendation this evening for approval for two new courses at New Albany High School beginning next school year. There's a third one that is still pending that we hope to present in December. Um, and I'll talk about that in a second. The first is Engineering for Computer-Driven Design. So this is a new elective course within the Business Technology Department specifically for computer science, um, or business-related pedagogy to give kids access to engineering design and the build process for hands-on experiences in elective course. The second course that's recommended this evening for addition next school year is Basic Ecology. It is a science full-credit high school course that it becomes an elective course. Could be a fourth science option for some students specifically at New Albany High School based upon the conversations with our math and science department specifically. Um, but it's basically, when you look at Basic Ecology, it's basic biology, math, and literacy topics through citizen science projects, analysis of real-world data. We'll use the wetlands and more, um, for learning opportunities across the natural areas on our school campus. And there's a portfolio requirement that will be added for the end of the course capstone. Um, so those are new courses. The third one, and I've just talked for, about it for a minute, um, and we're still working on the details, hopefully with Eastland Fairfield, is to offer a new satellite program for career technical education related to cybersecurity at New Albany High School beginning of the fall. Um, so we are in the home stretch. We have one more meeting that we think will solidify everything that remains in a requirement to actually host the C T E program at New Albany High School for kids. Um, it'll be a two-year program specifically hosted on our campus, but paid for by Eastland Fairfield because it's C T E credit. We'll just host it on our school campus. If we can't fill 25 seats, which I will be very surprised if we can't, uh, because it's a two-year commitment, both your junior and senior year, it will be opened up to other surrounding school districts in our proximity that are eligible to attend Eastland Fairfield. The current cybersecurity program at Eastland Fairfield, it's a very good program, but it's offered at the Fairfield campus. It's an hour and 15 minutes by bus, and our students do not participate. Given the Department of Labor statistics on job availability in the future related to cybersecurity, I believe there's a pipeline and workforce readiness that could be started here at New Albany High School for kids that have a specific interest in cybersecurity for information technology. So that will be the first of one of the pathways that we're working on for New Albany High School in the future, to talk about how we better service the needs or meet the needs of our kids academically, providing them different career opportunities that lead to pathways that specifically could benefit them during high school and in post-high school based upon the credentials they can earn, which you heard partially about tonight in the new graduation requirements because there are credentials tied to those industry-specific programs that also qualify kids for graduation. So I'm hopeful that at the December meeting, we'll also present cybersecurity to be incorporated into the January Registration Guide. So for tonight, it's, um, Computer-Driven Design for Engineering and Basic Ecology with the intent to bring cybersecurity next month. Lastly, in section C, um, as always, we're very grateful for all of the generosity of our community at large to donate to our school district to benefit our students. There is one specifically that I would like to point out based upon my work with the Lindy Infante Foundation. Um, the Board of Education will recall that the current New Albany Community Foundation had a fund available to offset scholarships for students for pay-to-participate. That fund has been basically depleted, less the interest that's currently available in the account, which is minimal. So we actually went out to try to find other resources to benefit students beyond the board's provision to waive the pay-to-participate fee. If a scholarship could be sought and provided for a student, dominant, free and reduced lunch, or that has a specific hardship, medically related within the family, a parent without work, um, a variety of reasons. I was successful in finding the Lindy Infante Foundation in Dublin. Um, I've met with Stephanie Infante multiple times, and through their generosity, they sponsored $9,701.25 for students for fall pay-to-participate fees based upon me. Um, so that helps us as a school district that I can dedicate resources to future students because we didn't have to spend them now, um, because we found another source. So I'm very grateful for the new partnership with the Lindy Infante Foundation, and I'm hopeful that it will continue moving forward. Are there any questions I can answer?
Thank you, Mr. Sawyer. Ms. Jenkins, please call the board?
Mr. Himmack?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
Anyway, our second opportunity for public participation, hearing none, brings us to the end of the meeting. Our next regular meeting is scheduled for Monday, December 16. We have a motion, second, to adjourn the board meeting. Second. Ms. Jenkins, you can.
Mr. Himmack?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.